4:30 PM and we are opening up the town of Bowling Green Town Council Work Session. Ms. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Voight?
Present.
Mr. Webb?
Here.
Dr. Chanelled, not present. Vice Mayor Coyle, not present. Mr. Stork?
Here.
Mr. Hagaman?
Here.
We have five members present, two missing, and we have a quorum. The first item on our business is the Virginia Risk Sharing Association presentation. And at this time, I will turn this over to Mr. Thomas Bullock. Welcome, Mr. Bullock.
Thank you. Did you ever much have a card? Should I tell them who I am? And here just to, we do this occasionally to different council people and also for surprise. For the people in Internet land.
Oh, yeah, use the microphone, please. I'm sorry.
It's red? Yes, red. That's for what? Okay. All right. So again, we do come out and do these trainings for our council people because we do it in short of town. And our interest is making sure that we give you all the tools you need so you don't get sued. So we're on insurance pool. So we'll make sure that we don't do anything to risk that, that the actual pool sovereignty and also make sure you all end up in the paper somewhere, which we see a lot of that. So we're going to talk about professional behavior today. And just go over a few things, just a few minutes with you guys, and feel free to ask any questions. My background, I've been here for 19 years at Versa, the Director of Education and Training. Before that, I was 14 years in law enforcement, and I came here as a consultant for law enforcement, and I got promoted some time ago. So I do this stuff now, which is a little bit safe for me, so that kind of makes things easier. But do like going out and talking about professional, you know, engagements and behavior because it is a problem. We see quite a bit across the pool from different, you know, from the north side of Virginia all the way into the south side to the west end of Virginia. So we do see a lot of this. So we try to get out ahead of that and make sure we give you all the tools you need. So feel free to ask any questions at any time, and we'll go from there. So one of the things, and again, my eyes are not in the best, so I will step away from a little bit from the microphone just so you can see this here, but one of the things we're going to talk about is the professional public officials liability, which is you all are covered by that through us. And that covers some things that if you were to, you know, go out here and get sued by someone, then we provide that coverage for you. You can see several of those things that are part of that coverage. And I want to focus more on the employment liability piece because that's where we're seeing a lot of claims come in across our pool members. And we have about 460 pool members that range from towns to counties to cities to water authorities. So we have a diverse membership here. So, I'm sorry? About 460. Yes, sir. And so types of potential liabilities, you can see there, you have civil liability, so you get sued civilly for certain things. You have the criminal, excuse me, the criminal liability. Is that, I can't see that. Ethical violations, those things are things you want to stay away from, but most what we, not what we see, again, are in the area of the civil part. Thankfully, we have not seen too many criminal things go. Well, if you watch, if you look at the news now up in Percival, that whole thing going on there, that's a criminal type thing, so those people will not have coverage from a public officials liability because it's a criminal act. So we don't cover those things. But we'll talk more about some of that here in a little bit, too. But the whole purpose behind it is making sure that when you go out and do things and for the, for the, oh, thank you, for the improvement of the town, that you want to make sure you're doing these things for the town and not for personal reasons. And we've seen it happen across the country. I have so many videos out there of council meetings going bad and people going at each other, so we want to keep that from happening, not just going to happen here, but just to give you some ideas what we see out there. One of the things, too, that we, that we look at is some common areas of exposure for the town councils are things of employment practice liability. That's what we want to look at here because that is probably, when we look at different types of claims that we see across our pool, all the liability is one of the top leading losses for us because we, you know, a lot of cars out there. But then also, too, we, we do get a lot of employment practice liability now. And part of that reasoning, we're guessing, is people, well, first of all, there are a lot of attorneys out there who have advertising on TV. If you watch TV, you see workers' comp people, which we do that, too, and then also attorneys who want to sue you for, you know, just other things. So we see a lot of that going on, too. And so we want to focus on that. Civil rights things, we don't see a lot of those, thankfully. Looking at some of the land use things because that does come up quite a bit is in terms of zoning and things of that nature, and in conflicts of interest. So it's very important to make sure that, you know, everything you do is above board. FOIA, who's your FOIA officer in the town? Oh, you are? You do? Okay. So FOIA is a very big thing, too, for us. You know, people do a lot of FOIA, do a lot of FOIA requests out there, and people are trying to figure out what should I give, what should I not give? You don't have to create a record. You know, if they ask for something, you don't have to create it. If it doesn't exist, don't create it. So we do a lot of training on that. So one of the things we want to focus again is on the employment practices part of it, too, to make sure we don't run afoul of FMLA and ADA, and I think you probably do a lot of FMLA stuff. We have an HR person on staff who does a lot of consultation with FMLA and ADA stuff because it is a big area of concern for us because it does cost a lot of money to defend those cases when they do come aboard. And a lot of these things are preventable. And that's what we want to try to work on because as part of an insurance pool, Virginia Code Section says that we have to provide risk management services to our members. And so we want to make sure that we do that, and this is one of the things that we do is go out and do the training on risk management and things of that nature. So, you know, how to mitigate.
What is FMLA?
Federal Medical Leave Act.
Thank you.
And basically, what it means is that an employee has up to 12 weeks in a year, and you can run a calendar year, you can do 12 months, however you want to do it, but it just gives an employee 12 months of unpaid leave and job protection for certain types of the conditions, whether it's taking care of somebody else. But it's all related to medical leave stuff, so. Family, that's right. I'm sorry, family. Yeah. It's a federal law, but it's Family Medical Leave Act. Thank you so much.
Family Medical. Thank you.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, because you have to have up to 50 employees, and you guys only have 12? Yeah, so, yeah, so it doesn't apply to you all. We have a lot of members it doesn't apply to. So if you, I think.
Because of our small size.
Because of your small size, and Tina's looking at your policy now, she told me. So we, we had a member who can call us about FMLA. They had an officer who wanted to go out on FMLA, and we said, well, how many people do you have? Uh, we have, you know, 20 employees. They said, well, it doesn't cover you all. But in their policy, they had it in a policy, so they had to abide by the law on that case because it's, they had it in the policies, in the papers. So once that, once that, you know, they're going to change their personnel policy here shortly on that, but if you have, you know, less than 50 employees, not required to have FMLA, even though you still are covered employer because you're a local government, your employees are not covered. So it's a very, that's a, that's a very nuanced type of law act there. So that one is something that requires a lot of special, special advice on that one. But we do have people run afoul of that, and we've had some claims from that. And so that's one of the things that we try to look at.
And just to jump in, our current personnel policy does offer, the town has always offered FMLA to the employees despite our size. The town has opted into that, and even through our revisions, which you have in your package today, that is included. We did consult with our attorney as well as Versa on that, and because it was a benefit that had been offered, particularly our attorney thought that it would not be as advantageous from a recruitment and retention perspective if we were to change it. But ultimately, that's a council decision if you all wanted to change that.
Do you work with the Virginia Municipal League?
Yes, we are a partner with them. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yeah, I know Michelle Gaudy real well. Yes. Any other questions? Yeah, as India said, I think, you know, we're seeing people now, because the job market is kind of hard getting good people to come to work, so they're doing things. You can, you can, you can offer it, and that's fine, but you're not required to do so, but you can definitely offer it as a benefit to a lot of employees. Because again, you know, we have a majority of our membership, not a majority, I'd say a big part of membership, are less than the 50 employee threshold, so they don't offer it. But some of them say, hey, no, we want to, we want to give that to our employees as a benefit and use that because, you know, you might go somewhere else down the road and try to find another job that does offer FMLA. So it's a, it's a, it's a big plus. It's up to you all, and I mean, it's all about, it really doesn't cost any money because, again, it's unpaid leave. So it's just a thing that gives your employees some sense of security when it comes to their job. So very good point. Thank you. So as we talked about some of the different exposures you all have there in terms of local government, you know, council people, there's, people are always going out, and you watch the news, people, I'm sure you go out to the town stores and people confront you and come up to you and approach you about certain things, and they probably sometimes are happy, sometime aren't. And so it's very important that you have some very good emotional intelligence, and we'll talk more a little bit about that, too, about what that means and how that can impact you. And, you know, I applaud you all for your public service. My dad served on the Board Supervisors for Mecklenburg County, excuse me, for the school board for Mecklenburg County for quite some years, and he said he couldn't do it anymore. There was just a lot of politics, and so he got off about after his second term. So I do applaud you all for doing it. Also, too, is, you know, add here to your code of conduct, and I know most councils, I'm not sure if y'all have signed that code of conduct yet, but if you haven't, I would encourage you to do so. We can get you one if you need it. Michelle Gaudy League, they have a sample one there as well. But definitely a good way to set up that professionalism for the town council so people could say, hey, we have an excellent town council here, they signed a code of conduct, so we can, we can be assured that they're going to abide by that code of conduct and not do things that are going to usurp the whole or detriment to the town. And looking at consult legal counsel, if you have a question about things, please call us, and we can give you some counsel on those things. I'm not an attorney, but we have seen, like the commercial says, we know a thing or two, we've seen a thing or two, but we do have some attorneys on staff that we can help out with providing guidance. And I know India's reached out to us and things before, so we have HR people that can help out. We have all different types of consultation opportunities for you on that. So don't make decisions without looking at someone. Your town attorney is also another option you can have there, too. And so it's very important to look at those things as a way to maintain town resources. You know, we don't want to, one of the things we see is oftentimes that towns will do things, and they say, well, we have insurance for that. That's, you laughing? And that's not the right attitude to have when it comes, because, again, we're in our insurance pool, you're paying premium to the pool, which are tax dollars. So you want to make sure you do those things and you're good stewardships of that, stewards of that. We do the same thing, too, because we're good stewards of that. That's why we try to go out and do risk management to keep the costs from going up, from litigation costs. As you saw, I'm sure you probably saw on the news today that the case in Newport News, which is running, she just won $10 million, that school teacher got shot. That's ours. So, you know, we're, that's, yeah. So we're, you know, those things are not really preventable to a certain extent, but when stuff happens, that's what insurance is for. But you don't want to take advantage of that because it does result in premiums going up over time. So that's just like your homeowners insurance or your auto insurance, you want to make sure you still keep that, do all you can to keep from happening. So very important to look at that.
Are there things that, as a council, as a governing body, that we would do or not do that could cause our insurance to become null and void?
It would have to be something very egregious. We've only had, we've only had one member that we've had to ask to leave the pool because they would not, well, to answer your question, if you, if you have a lot of issues and you don't adhere to our advice and guidance, then we're going to look out for the pool and say, okay, you need to go somewhere else. And we only had to happen to do that one time. And so if, you know, we'll come out and give you some suggestions on certain things, and if we feel that it's going to be an issue that's going to cost the, that could potentially cost the pool a lot of money, then we're going to ask, you know, we're going to, we have a board, too, so we have to go before the board, and the board gives us, we present our case to the board, and the board says, okay, we want to not renew that member because of the fact that they're not good for the entire pool or for the strength of the pool itself. So.
So you asked us that we should sign that code of conduct, and we should also be certified in the things that we're supposed to be certified in.
It helps, yes. And that's not, that's not a game changer for us, but it just goes the extra length to show your citizens that you all are doing things above board, which is very important because, you know, look at different types of risk. Reputational risk is one of those risks that you want to definitely maintain if you're, you know, it's because of the fact that it does impact houses and see you all as town counselors, and also when you go out in your personal life, too, how they see you as well. So you want to make sure you maintain that reputational risk because that's all you have. And people do look at that, and it's one of the things that we want to try to maintain because that's one of the things you can, you can build it up, but it doesn't take long to lose it. So very good question, very good question.
Thank you.
So, one of the things we see a lot of, too, is the harassment piece. We do a lot of training for harassment for our members as well. We go out, I'm actually doing one for a town in January, where I'd spend a whole day doing all their staff on harassment. And this is like, they do it every year because that's just what they want to do. But one of the things about harassment is that it does, it is a big concern for us because it can lead to things like a hostile work environment, and which leads to ELC complaints, which leads to, again, potential liability. And so these things can kind of blow up in your face if you don't watch them a lot. And basically, I'll give you, again, I'll give you all the information, I'll send it to India so she can have that, so she can give it to you so you can have it. I don't care, you can use it, do what you want with it. It's not copyrighted, but it is a good resource for you to look at if you want to. But looking at the harassment piece here is that this one thing about it is, when you think about harassment, people think about, you know, male on female, but it can be same-sex harassment, it can be all types of, it doesn't have to just be sexual, it can be any type of harassment that causes people not to feel comfortable at work. And so, and also with that, it can be a third-party person, it can be one of your vendors that comes in, or a citizen that comes in and harasses employees. So you want to make sure you address that and take that seriously because it can lead to things that can cause litigation. And sometimes these things are very costly because it involves several attorneys, potential for some type of settlement on that aspect. So this, again, is a preventable one. You know, earthquakes, we really can't prevent those, but this one, that's something we can prevent from happening or occurring on a regular basis. So this is just a more definition of what harassment is all about and how you can look at that and figure out, you know, what things are going on. We've, I have, unfortunately, I have so many examples of this going on in local government, not just from council people, but also from employees, city managers, town managers. We're dealing with a case right now out in southwest Virginia where an employee is being harassed by the town manager, and so there's some litigation going on with that. We're trying to get in there and mediate that, but it does happen quite a bit. And this is, again, male, female, male, male town manager and the female employees. So those things happen, unfortunately. So, you know, we can't, we cannot recommend that somebody be terminated. Now, if that person stays on, they don't do any action, then that's one, then we say, okay, well, we no longer want to take this risk in the pool because this can blow up in our face. So we want to say, okay, if you don't change things, we're going to not renew your, your coverage. And so we look at that seriously. We have a group at the back of the office that look at these, these things and try to figure out a game plan or a risk management plan and go out and do some training or other things to help out. And if that doesn't change the course of direction for that, that member, then that's when we say, okay, we can't, we can't afford to renew you, we can't renew you into the pool anymore, so. Excuse me.
Another question.
Yes, ma'am.
The, the liability, does that extend also to things like somebody tripping out front?
So, yes, ma'am. That's, that falls under general liability policy. Very good question. So you think it's like if somebody were walking and trip up, and there's an obvious sign of defect, then, yeah, general liability would cover that. So we have several, we do public officials liability, which you all are covered under. We have legal liability. We also have general liability. We have workers' comp, which is basically just all your employees that are covered by that, and, and property liability. So we're just like an insurance company, but we're not. We're, we're, we're an insurance pool.
Now, at any point, are we liable for this if, if it's found, is there some kind of judiciary action? If a case comes before the insurance companies, are we held liable for something that maybe we neglected to attend to?
Well, I'm going to talk about that here in a second.
Okay.
Very good question. So right here, this is hostile work environment. Again, this is the all-encompassing term that just covers anything that causes someone to be, to feel that they're not safe at work. Now, this is a very subjective term. I mean, it's because there, you can't put a pin on, you know, XYZ that this person did XYZ that made a person feel uncomfortable. It's very subjective. And then, you know, some things that make me uncomfortable may not make you uncomfortable or you uncomfortable, or vice versa. So that's very subjective, but sort of the main thing is maintaining professionalism all the time and at every time, at every engagement you have. So what you need to know about this basically is that, you know, harassment can, can damage the entity. We've had a lot of cases where that happened before. It can also undermine trust in, in, in the government. And so we don't want to do that, that, we want to make sure that people trust what happens in the town of Bowling Green and anywhere else. And also, it can expose you to a lot of different liabilities personally and also as a counselor. The one thing about it is, too, is that if we find that, like that case in Percival, where those, the mayor and the, excuse me, the town manager and the, yeah, assistant mayor both got charged criminally, we don't cover that. We're not going to not renew the town, but we don't cover that, those costs related to that criminal charge. So again, that's why it's very important to understand that not everything's going to be covered if you do get involved in cases. Same thing for any, if, if, if India were to do something wrong or criminally, we wouldn't cover her for that. So just be mindful of those things because it does come into a point of, you know, when do I, when do I need to start paying out of my pocket as a council person for something I did? We've seen it happen with Board Supervisors, too, where it happened quite a bit, where they sue each other, and we're trying to figure out how to untangle all of that, and we figure out, okay, well, that's not going to work out because we're excluding that coverage from that. And this, again, that's a different conversation there, but very important to look at those liabilities because I don't know about you, but I couldn't afford to go out and pay out a million-dollar judgment on my own. Hi. So that's very important. Any questions on that part of it? Okay. So here's the code section, that's part of the code section, 15.2, that's 1405, is that correct? I don't have my glasses. So that basically is a code section that gives you some immunity to do certain things, but there are some exceptions for that, and you see the exception in the bottom part there. However, the immunity granted, excuse me, for this section shall not apply to, help me out here.
Intentional misconduct.
Oh, gross negligence, yeah. So that last line catches everything in that group here. So again, you know, gross negligence is a, is a high bar to meet, but willful misconduct, you know, intentional misconduct, those things, again, are things that the court will have to look at. And so typically, what we find is that we'll do a reservation of rights letter to, to, if we have a questionable claim that comes in, it could be borderline, we'll do reservations of rights. So, okay, we're going to monitor this case here, and at some point, we may provide defense for you, but at, but at some point, we're going to say, this is not covered by, by Versa or by the, by the policy. So very important part of that. So, yeah, you know, when you think about things, you know, like errors and omissions, those things can happen sometimes where you don't, you know, as, as your job, you can see in there, you have some discretionary decisions to make and also ministerial, ministerial decisions to make. And so, you know, with the thing about local government, same thing with police and fire, they have immunity as well. You have sovereign immunity, you have qualified immunity, and so they understand that not everything's going to go the right way. You're not going to make the decision for the best of everybody all the time, but if they can show that you did something willfully and intentionally wrong, then, then this is when the code section kicks in here, and you're not going to be covered for that immunity part. So again, that'll be, all this will be in the slide presentation, once I give it to India, you can have that. So restraint, one of the things, too, that's, it's very important about, and I can imagine, I don't know if you all have heated meetings or not with, with people, but it's going to be very hard sometimes to not restrain yourself. So the whole thing about restraint is, is that you have to start thinking about, I want to make sure I feel good at the end of the day after what I said. It goes back to the whole emotional intelligence piece about not getting emotionally hijacked and having that restraint to not respond in a very unprofessional manner, which we've seen quite a bit. And I, I was going to show some, I had some videos, but I said, you know, this is very discouraging and frustrating to see people acting this way in adulthood now with some of the council pieces, council meetings we're seeing across the country. But we want to make sure that we do those things and make sure that we keep everybody being professional and have that restraint and not have these outbursts, which can cause a lot of angst because, again, everything's being recorded now. And so those things will show up on YouTube, and you don't want to be that person on YouTube, and they know who you are, and they're like, oh, wow, I'm embarrassed, I'm embarrassed to live in the town of Bowling Green. So just be mindful of those things and keep that restraint as a, as a top thing. And the best thing you can do is somebody pushes your butt and just take a deep breath and wait about 10 seconds, and then respond. Because actually, there's a physiological response to that because your brain has this part called the amygdala, and that's where our emotional brain is. And so when we get triggered emotionally, amygdala says, we're going to, we're going to go out here and try to fight or flight. When, the fight or flight means responding in a manner that's going to be somewhat similar with that person say to you. So, you know, you want to make sure you give that time for that brain, that, that trigger to go from your emotional brain to your forebrain, which is your rational brain, so that way you can start thinking about a very rational response. Because we've all done it before. I know we've done it before. I know we've said some things that we're like, oh, I wish I'd never said that. So that's what happens, we get triggered, and we want to make sure we keep that emotional intelligence going, too. can always think about that in back of your mind. And also, too, like I said, I'm from a small town called South Hill, Virginia, and they've had some issues with council, you know, fights going on and, and, and citizens coming to the meetings. And so, you know, I know all about how things can kind of get out of hand there. We, I just did a site assessment for the town of Withfield because they were concerned about just their meeting room and how we can make it a little bit safer for town council people so that people don't, they don't really, because they're afraid of being attacked. And so we deal a few things with that, looking at targeted hardening to make sure that you all are safe. But it's very important because you are, we are in a time now where people are somewhat hyper-engaged in certain things. So we want to make sure that we keep you all safe and you don't do anything that's going to, you know, cause issues. You're never going to get everything right, and we're going to talk about wicked problems in a few minutes, too, because I heard you all talking about charging for an event you have here. And you were saying, no, nobody's going to come, and, but that's a wicked problem. We'll talk about that here in a second. So as you look at local government, the whole environment of it right now is that people don't trust government a lot, unfortunately. There's a lot going on there with that, a breakdown in communication for the most part there sometimes. People are just, you know, trying to, you have a diverse thought process, you have a diverse population, so people, some people want playgrounds, some people don't. You know, how do you deal with that? How do you balance the two out? And that's very important to have that, and you have polarization as well. So all these things are very important to think about when you, when you look at the local government as a whole, and I want to tell you all because you know, you've been in for the business for a while, and you've seen the good and the bad there. So it's very important to look at that. And then some challenges you all have, I mean, I can, I bet you can name quite a few that you have as council people that you see, and trying to balance between your personal life as well as the public service life and those of that nature can be a big problem for you. Wicked problems are those problems that are socially and culturally unsolvable because of the fact it has so many tentacles, but if you get together and talk them out, you[1783.01] of the fact it has so many tentacles, but if you get together and talk them out, you can kind of find the best solution for whatever that problem is. And it just takes discussion and time to do that. Uh, you know, looking at different perspectives is very important there too, to make sure that you understand that part of it because opinions are different and we have to be able to open to those opinions, whether it be from a fellow council person or from a citizen. Uh, being able to, um, to look at things from, um, different criteria is very important too, just to look at things from a different way and consult with your peers from other localities because they've been through it before too, if anybody's new on the council. So those things are very important to look at.
No one wants a leader who always looks as if she just rolled out of bed. Thanks a lot. Yes. Obviously not available on such an important day. If peaceful lobbyists scare you, maybe you're in the wrong profession. Driving through Petersburg, it doesn't look like you are doing anything anyway. Just resign.
Wow. Siobhan Donovan is the mistress of smoke and mirrors. She is very good at appearing moderate and reasonable, but scratch the surface and her policies make her a danger to her constituents. She's an utter charlatan.
Mamie Lox, Virginia, speaking at Warren's rally last night, justifies how the Dems are all going down the wrong path. She looks fickle, unprepared and aloof. Yawn. Well, I'm yawning after this tweet.
So one vocal majority's voice is all it takes for you to assist harboring fugitives? How shallow, unless you're getting some kickback for something. Hey, if you listen to her, listen to me and go lick a toilet every morning. Maybe you'll catch a germ and good written way to you.
Please work on controlling the shine off your head. It's blinding.
I resemble that remark. So those are just some mean tweets that people in Virginia have got. And I mean, there's quite a few of those out there, as you know, I'm sure. And social media is not the, is, is unfortunately a venue for people to go out there and become keyboard warriors, unfortunately, because they can do it with some amount of anonymity. But, uh, we got to be careful with those things and don't, don't let them trigger you out because you don't want to get into a point where you start having an argument with someone, um, via social media because those things can get out of hand. So want to keep that from happening and just, you know, because it can, it can, and you, if you have a, does the town have a social media page? You do? Okay. Um, I know it's sometimes you want to go out and delete certain things, but you got, you can't do that. Okay. Good. Good. Yeah. So you got to be mindful of that because there's a first, there's a thing called the First Amendment, you know, free speech. So you got to be careful of that. I mean, we, there are some things you want to, you're just like, I can't, I don't want to see anymore. You want to delete it, but you, you can't do it from a public page because, uh, and then too, when you start looking at your personal social media, you know, does that? Is it your personal social media or are you on there as a, as a person, as, um, Ms. Davis? The, the person lives in the town or you're on there as Ms. Davis, the council person?
Davis is not on here.
Oh, okay. Well, there you go. That's one way. It's called, that's called risk management.
I will say that is addressed in our freedom of information. If we use our personal social media, which I suspended mine personally, but if we use it and start discussing town business, that opens our account to be FOIA'd.
Yes, ma'am.
Anybody on earth can look at, if it's a 20-year-old account, they can look at every one of your informational items on there from 20 years.
That's correct.
Also, if there's more than one council person on your social media, that can be construed as an illegal meeting.
Yep.
So, um, after reading all of that, that's why I suspended my account. Anyhow.
Yeah, that's a very good point. Um, this, just when you, people, we've seen some, some councils who had discussions via email, um, or social media, and if you have more than two, then that's a considered a meeting and, uh, you're still held by the notice piece and all the different parts of information. Uh, so that's very important to not do that, uh, not to have any discussion about any town business, you know, unless it's a legitimate meeting. So yes, very good point. Uh, so some of the things that we all, you know, we all have our beliefs and our perception about certain things and all these have just basically given to us by the way we were brought up across the years and upbringing and who've been around. Uh, and so, you know, one of the things we look at is how do we, how do we resolve conflict? And what do you think some, why, excuse me, why do you, why do you think we have conflict? Why do you think we have conflict?
Control issues.
Control issues, that's a good one. Yeah. That's a real good one. Well, I mean, there's a, there's a myriad, myriad number of, of reasons why we have conflict out there, but from a standpoint of local government, uh, you may have some conflict with each other or a conflict with a citizen for certain reasons, but it's very important to dialogue through that conflict. Sometimes it may be hard and if that's not, if you can't do it right then and there, if you had the opportunity to step away from it a little bit, come back and discuss it. Let's, you know, let's talk on things a little bit cooler and you'll find that things will go a little bit better for you. There's one tale, I tell people when they have an email that, that irritates them or gets them hijacked emotionally, you want to, people want to respond right then and there. Don't do that. You want to, you can type it up, but don't hit the send button, walk away from it. Go get some coffee, go get an apple, you know, eat an apple or something like that and, and come back to it. And I guarantee you will say, you know, I do not want to send this email. You do not want, yes, ma'am, you read.
I'm, I'm the mayor, I leave it on.
Oh, okay. All right. So we want to make sure we keep that from happening. Um, you know, what can we do about conflicts? It's again, dialogue through them, talk them through and try the best way to fill, you know, to try to solve them as quickly as possible because it does take away from the mission of the council and the town to, to, to really get involved and those get bogged down with that. So we want to make sure we keep that from happening. I said before, dialogue is very important. And, uh, I, I can't read that, but that is from Mr. Alvin Fogle. He's a, he's a.
Want me to read it for you?
Yes, sir.
All right. The illiterate of the 21st century will not be those who cannot read and write, but those who cannot learn, unlearn and relearn.
Yeah. So he's an American writer and a futurist and he's unfortunately passed away, but very profound statement here is that we all can stand some time to learn and, you know, relearn from certain things. So, you know, take, take it to heart. One of the things about some other things too, is that, uh, when it comes to engaging each other, uh, I want to say, I was going to say city staff, um, or town staff, is that there are certain rules in place. And I know that, uh, VML and ICMA, they have a, a booklet on, you know, how, what's the role of the town manager? What's the role of the council? You know, how to engage with, with, with staff, you know, because I was watching a video the other day about, um, I know it sometimes may seem very inefficient, but there was a mayor on there, he was complaining to the towns, to the town manager that he didn't see why he's go to, he can go, if he can go straight to India, who's an employee of the town and get information, why does he need to go through the town manager to talk to, to India? He wants to go straight there. And so things like that, you know, nuances there, and that's why it's very important to have everybody on the same page. We've seen that quite a bit where things get lost in translation. Um, you've seen that exercise we have, you tell somebody here on this side of the room, a statement and it goes all the way around and by the time it gets over to India, it's, it's not the same thing. So it's very important that, uh, you know, you have a channel to go through, a chain of command. And like I said, I was in law enforcement for 14 years, you had to train the command, you had to go through a certain amount of people. You couldn't go straight to the chief, but you had to go through your sergeant and everybody else to get there. So it's very important to follow those, those chains to ensure that the message is going the way it should be. And then civility doesn't cost, no, it costs nothing. And I should have brought my glasses and bide you everything, right? And I do apologize for that. But that's the main thing is that civility is very important in, in the job you all do, not just professionally, but also personally. And, uh, you know, it's, it's one of those things where it, it takes a lot of effort to do that, to be civil to people and to each other. Uh, and if you are, if you follow emotional, emotional intelligence, this is one of the cornerstones of that is knowing what ticks, what makes me, what makes me tick and what triggers me emotionally. You know, could be a person, could it be something people say? And knowing that is part of that, you know, self-awareness piece allows you to manage that and build better relationships and maintaining relationships. So it's very important to be civil, uh, in all that you do and always, I like, when I walked in, y'all were smiling and talking, it was great. I've come into town council meetings before and people just sitting there like, like, can I get this over with? So it's good that you all are engaging together and you brought apples, uh, but that does help the whole process of becoming a human and knowing that you are human and that you, you're going to make mistakes out there, but i- if you make a mistake that's unintentional, we got you. We, you know, we'll take care of that from a defense standpoint, but if it's very intentional, we're going to say, I'm sorry, we can't cover you for that. Uh, so it's very important to look at that part of it. So, any questions? I finished a little bit earlier, in this case, there were some questions.
Thank you so much for coming.
Oh, you're welcome. Yes, sir.
Mr. Stork. So, um, and I'm trying to remember, how long have we been a customer of yours?
Oh, gosh, as long, I've been here 19 years and I think, uh, I think you guys have been as long as I've been here.
Cause I guess it, we, when we've switched from DeJarnet and Beal over, I guess it was to y'all back, some of us were on council moons ago. So the pool, using, um, Newport News as an example, that teacher was awarded $10 million.
So we insure the school, not the city.
Yeah, okay. So the school system got sued or the city got sued?
The, the school system.
Okay. And y'all insure them?
Yes, sir.
And are our rates going to go, I mean?
Not because, no, not, it's not going to be, that's a very good question. So we don't, we don't underwrite, uh, we didn't underwrite each member specifically. So it's not going to cause the town of Bowling Green's rates to go up for that one because we have built up a, um, a reserve.
Can y'all take a $10 million hit and be okay?
Yes, sir.
Really?
Yeah. We have a, we have a, we have a, um, our net position is, is in good place for that. Yes, sir.
So, and I was trying to remember, because I was on council years ago when I guess we went to you, but how, how is our premiums calculated? By the size of us?
It's based upon several factors. Uh, your workers comp premium is based upon the payroll.
Like in anybody's business.
Yes, sir. Payroll and also experience mod. And then your, your property, all those, all those were kind of written based upon losses and stuff of that nature.
Gotcha.
Yes, sir.
So it's basically, who, who owns versa?
You all do.
Yeah. So like VML and the, and the, the municipalities went together to create.
Yes, sir.
Kind of self-insure. Okay.
So we have a board that are comprised of, um, members, uh, and like it would be, you know, like Indy could be on the board, anybody who's a town manager, city manager, Michelle Gowdy's on our board as part of the league, because we were, we're a partner of the league. So we have a board and, uh, I encourage you all to go to our website, uh, and look, we have all our, our financials up there as well as our board members because we're very transparent with that to make sure everybody knows, uh, that, you know, what you're looking into. But yeah, we, we have a, a very good net position. So that way, we, we do that because we don't want to have to go out and assess because if a pool is not, um, doesn't have enough money to pay its claims, then they have to go out, they can go out and assess its members more. Uh, so we have a net position that allows us to not do that.
So in, in the example of Newport News again, if it happened here, you all would, you have an attorney or you would hire.
We hire one, yes.
To defend us.
Yes, sir.
And then that's paid and then whatever the law, the judgment is, then that's paid.
Yes, sir.
Gotcha.
Yep. We pay all them. We consult, uh, with members particularly if it's something we look at and want to settle because it doesn't make business sense to, to spend a lot of cost on it. You know, if it's something that's obviously wrong, where it's like, okay, there's nothing we could defend this case, we're not going to even try to get an attorney on that. We're going to talk with you and say, we think this case right here is worth X, Y, Z and make a settlement on that case. Yep. Yes, sir.
So I did not get a clear answer. Um, if something that we have here in the town or any jurisdiction has that is continually neglected or not taken care of, how is that taken care of by you as far as coverage?
So when you say something that like, like, like a building or sidewalks.
Yeah. Just say there's a, a, a bad sidewalk, we know about it, and three years later, it's still a bad sidewalk. Somebody falls and smashes their face or whatever.
And that one will be something we would not litigate because of the fact that you knew about it, um, and therefore, you know, it's, it's not worth trying to pay an attorney. Any attorneys in the room?
Not yet.
Okay. Good. But that is not worth paying attorney for those things, but, but we, we do, so what, that's again, going back to risk management, uh, we have staff members that go out and work with our members to do inspections on sidewalks and looking at building issues, you know, making sure there are no trip hazards because we want to prevent that from happening.
Right.
Yeah. But also too, as part of that is we, we train staff on how to look for those things. Uh, and if, once you're notified about something, then it's yours. You know, if you didn't know about it, then you don't have any liability. Once you know about it, you have a lot of liability for that.
And is that extended to say ADA violations?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Very good question. Very good question.
Any other questions from this council? Thank you so much.
Thank you all so much for your time.
I would like a copy of this, please.
Yes, I will email it to her first thing in the morning.
That would be awesome.
You're welcome.
Mr. Bullock, we enjoyed having you here and thank you for your explanations.
Feel free to reach out here and ask questions at some point. Can I have a card?
Yes, sir. Um, does anyone here need a couple minute break before we move on to the next item?
I'm good.
Okay. The next item on this, um, order of business is the utilities deposit discussion. Um, I'm going to let India touch on this. I have my own opinions on some of this. Oh, I guess India's not in here.
Yes, I'm okay.
Oh, she'll be back. Um, we'll, we'll go over this. This was brought up at our last council meeting by, um, a citizen. He had a complaint. There have been several questions from citizens about how we are dealing with our deposits. So at this time, Ms. Indy, I'm going to turn this over to you for a minute.
Um, so I stepped out for a moment, so I didn't necessarily catch the last part of that. Um, but during a meeting with the mayor and vice mayor, um, the discussion around water and sewer deposit amounts was brought up, um, particularly as it pertains to, um, bills and customers, particularly renters who may be leaving and leaving, um, large, um, bills, um, upon their departure, um, and essentially the town not being able to collect on those. Um, so at that meeting, it was discussed and requested that we take a look at what, um, an increase to the deposits would look like, um, for, uh, one cycle, two cycles, and then I believe our, in consultation with the town attorney, um, it's either state code or our town code, um, that dictates that we can't do more than five months. So that would equate to about two and a half cycles, um, for the minimum, um, based on the minimum bill. Uh, so what you all have, um, here on the screen, um, for residential, that would look like $175, um, at that one option, option A, which is one cycle, the two months. Um, option B would be 350 and then option C would be 485 at two and a half for in-town residential deposits. Taking a look at out-of-town residential deposits, um, that increases, uh, there's a 150 deposit for out-of-town folks, um, with the one cycle being 254, uh, two cycles being 507. Uh, option C, um, being two and a half cycles at 634. Then moving on to the next slide for commercial, um, again, there's a $100 deposit currently, uh, which we believe based on our research, hasn't been adjusted, um, since at least 2007. Um, that's the last time though, the town code shows that there was a change to that area, but it doesn't specifically say which, which changes there were. Um, and so one sec, one cycle there would be, uh, 184. Uh, option B for two cycles, which is a minimum of four months is 369. Um, option C, two and a half cycles, which is five months, 461. And then looking at the out-of-town commercial deposits, um, $150. Option A there, um, would be like one cycle, 272. Option B, two cycles, which is four months at the minimum, would be 545. And then option C, uh, two and a half cycles at five months, 681, um, which is again the code maximum. I do want to highlight that this does not include any trash fees or capital infrastructure fees. So this is just the base minimum rates, as requested during our, our meeting a couple of months ago. So that's what staff was asked to research and analyze, and that's what we're prepared to speak to today.
One of the things that the vice mayor and I discussed with our town manager, our biggest issue isn't with our, our normal citizens, it's with renters. So if they get behind for two months, we can't collect for another two months. So by the time they move, they're four months behind on their water, sewer, and then we're out four months. So that was one of the reasons Valerie and I asked for the different rate schedules. We were leaning very much towards option B, because it was the four-month, the two cycles. So that if somebody were to leave, we have that in the deposit to cover what they skipped out on. Most people have been very good about paying when we sent their bills, weren't they, India, with not so much?
I think, I think anecdotally, that we see more compliance with our homeowners versus, and the ability to track down homeowners afterwards, it tends to be a little bit easier. We have some of that information. But the renters particularly seem to be a challenge.
Problematic, yeah. So these were, these were part of the reasons, because this is one of our largest losses. So we felt it was important to bring this to council, so that you all could take a look at this and discuss this. And at the end of the day, I'm going to leave this decision to you. There are also some other things that we will touch on, but this is the first of it. So are there questions?
So what, what kind of hit are we talking a year? What loss-wise?
Historically, looking back, I think when I first got here, and I don't remember which audit year that was, because we were so far behind, but there was at least one year where we're talking sixty-ish thousand dollars of unpaid.
In one year?
In one year.
Oh, wow. So do we allow, so say we've got a renter that's leaving town, and they're a decent person, and they, they call in and say, I'm moving. Can you just apply my deposit to my last bill? Do we allow that?
Yes.
We do.
But oftentimes, I think to, to the point is, we're talking about a hundred dollars. And then oftentimes, the bills, I mean, Ms. Oliver's here, I'll let her sort of come up and speak to, just anecdotally, some of the, the bills that we've seen. But there have been some that have been in arrears, in the, that exceed a thousand dollars.
So what are other localities that you're familiar with?
They have much higher deposit rates, somewhere, most of them in the range of three hundred. I think I've seen some that have a different rate for renters versus residential. We brought an item last year that would have allowed, you know, renters to basically be in care of the property owner. That was tabled a year ago. So I would say most localities ensure that they have a, a means for collection and/or send for delinquent recovery via another company.
Does any locality put it back on the land, the landlord, and say, it's, you're, you know, if they skip, it's your bill and you owe it?
Correct. Some of them do. And that's something that we, we chatted about last year. But we were asked to go look at alternative options, and so it's been, I don't know, maybe a year and a half since we brought that back.
Was that here?
Yes.
Because it's, it's kind of difficult to hold somebody responsible. If your son took out a credit card, he may be your son, but you're not legally responsible for the fact that he got in arrears and got in trouble with his credit card. It, it, it almost seems unfair to take someone to court, that we, they didn't come in and open up that account. We extended the credit to their renter, not to them. And I, again, this is up to you, but I have a problem with charging somebody that did not take the, open up the account themselves.
Because I was just like, you know, a lot of landlords require a, a deposit as well, a first month, last month, and one month security. So, you know, that landlord is going to know when they leave. We don't know when they leave. I mean, they're not going to call us.
Right.
I just, it, it'd be a huge education piece for us to bring all the landlords up to speed on, hey, guess what? You need to help us here, or you might even be on the hook. But I, I don't have a problem with raising the, you know, the deposit. But it's option B, so that, go back to residential.
Option B is two cycles.
So what would residential be?
Residential is, option B is three hundred and fifty, and out-of-town is five hundred and seventy for two cycles, or five hundred and seven for two cycles.
And, and what is it now? A hundred dollars?
Deposit is a hundred bucks. A hundred for in-town residential and commercial, and then out-of-town is one fifty for both residential and commercial.
This is why we're in financial. Go ahead, Mr. Hagaman.
No, I'm a renter. So does this, are you going to charge me that deposit right now?
No, you're already, you're already in the system.
I'm with you and Valerie on this. I, I think the two-month cycle, I mean, I've got a wife and a granddaughter that live with me, and they like to take long showers, and my bill is over four hundred dollars. So I don't think three hundred and fifty is asking too much for a deposit.
So you're looking?
Because you don't know, I mean, if they, if you've got a family coming in, and they're renting a four-bedroom house, and they got four kids, I mean, that's a lot of water. That's a lot of washing. So it's going to hit three hundred and fifty pretty damn quick. So I'm with the two-month option.
And the two-cycle?
Two-cycle, yeah. And I'm also kind of with David about as far as maybe educating the landlord, saying that they could be on the hook too. I mean, my landlord's a real good landlord. He's very on top of things that goes on in my house. I mean, I mean, he's there, he does maintenance and stuff, and he comes by and does preventive maintenance on the AC like every two months. So I mean, they're going to know, I gotta, I gotta let them know. So it's like David said, you know, they're going to let them know, hey, we're moving out. And if they, and most of them, like David said, they'll charge one month, or they'll charge two months deposit for the security deposit. And so they're going to have some back money there too. So I don't, it's kind of where I feel with it, so.
Go ahead, Mr. Boy.
Okay. First thing, real quick, that, that discussion over the landlords, that, that was under a prior treasurer. I don't know how much you're really familiar with that line of discussion, everything that happened there, but I would say maybe if you could get the chance to maybe look at what that was, see if that's something you'd even be, like, how, how you'd feel about that. Bounce that off you before even bringing that back potentially.
We discussed, we've discussed the, the, the item back then, which did discuss the in-care of portion, which our system does have the ability to do. But we would need, obviously, council direction to do that, and then to work with the attorney to update our, our code on both fronts.
All right. And then, then on this, I, I do have another question. I'm leaning towards you all, but like you just said, Randy, like, you know, you're at four fifty. So like, do we have any kind of ballpark guess what the actual average bill is across everything? Because, you know, this is based off of a minimum, so that means that obviously it won't catch.
I don't know how you can average it though, because you're going to have to look at the family size. I mean, a, a two-person family is going to be a whole heck of a lot less than a four-person or a five-person.
Oh, right. I'm not saying to apply this specifically to each person. I'm just curious, like, we're going to, so if we triple, you know, just, you know, round numbers here, triple the deposit, that's going to recoup more money than we currently are. You know, but how far short are we going to actually get based off the fact that the average person, the average amount per month is higher than three fifty, because not everybody's at the minimum? So I'm just wondering how close this will catch everything.
Well, the three fifty is for two cycles, not just one. Okay. And I, I know what it's like to have a larger bill. I had five children. So I mean, between laundry and showers and dishes, and yeah, we always look like we were filling the swimming pool every month. Mr. Webb?
Is there a different deposit amount if you only have water? Because there are some customers that have water. I don't know if there's some that just have sewer, but, or would that three fifty apply to everyone?
So the way that the code is currently written, it doesn't really clarify whether it's water or sewer. It's just, that's the utility deposit. So if there was a desire to have a separate deposit, we would have to work with the attorney for that, for people who don't have one or the other.
Okay. And I'm sure that's a very small number. I mean, I happen to only have water, you know.
That's all I have.
And, you know, how, you know, how are we, as a town, allowing bill get to a thousand dollars? Why don't we cut them off? And so like, can you, and I'm sure there is a reason, and can you just remind me, you know, how that works now?
Absolutely. So a couple of things changed during the pandemic era, there was a, a bill passed in the General Assembly that basically prohibits localities, utility providers, I should say, from cutting off water in, in the instance that the temperature is above ninety-two degrees or below thirty-two. It's like freezing, basically. So the goal, I think, was during the COVID era, was people, there were tough times, you can't cut people's water off because it's a, it's a utility. But because of the public health emergency at the time, that bill was passed. But that was codified, so that's forever. So I think the way that our billing cycle works, because we bill on a bi-monthly basis, pretty much your, your summer, in some ways, are virtually out in some days, in, in some ways, to be able to cut people off after they hit the sixty. And then you have a very short window. And so we were able to do some cutoffs this month. But that's the first time that's happened since, I think, back in the early spring, because we have a short window in the spring before the winter comes, and we're in that thirty. So essentially, by state mandates and the nature of Virginia weather, which is fickle, we could end up with really two short windows where we're able to cut people off based on that, that amount.
I mean, is there any thought going to a, a monthly billing? I mean, I know we talked, can we talk about that? Was there a reason that we don't do a monthly billing?
From the staffing perspective, there would be a huge operational impact to be able to produce bills on a monthly basis, as well as the printing and the postage that's involved, as well as the public works time that it takes to read and check meters based on our current operations.
The meters for radio, I mean, they all got.
In some instances, but there are still many, many times where there are challenges with reads that require, yes. Batteries die, there are, I don't know, there were probably fifty rereads, I would say, the last, the last cycle. And then we have leaks which require rereads and then a manual adjustment. So, yeah, it becomes operational challenges.
All right. And then when it comes to the, you know, the landlord, I, man, I just, I can't get on board with that. I mean, the town's extending somebody credit just like electric or their phone. I mean, what if they decide they want to go leave the garden hose on? I mean, that's not, you know, if I'm renting something, that's not my responsibility. That is, you know, but, so I think that the town needs to be in a position where we don't get ourselves, we're extending, you know, we need to figure out how we're going to extend the least amount of credit before we know there's an issue and we stop it. You know, that's just where, where I stand on that. But I think increasing that deposit on up, I mean, I'm, I'm with Jeff. I mean, you know, I know that's the minimum, but that might not be the average. You know, maybe it's, you know, it ought to be a couple hundred dollars more. And then the other question I have, you know, if I'm, you know, if I'm moving to town and I live here for the next twenty, thirty years, do I ever get my deposit back? You know, like, is there a period of time where, you know, I've lived here, I've owned, you know, over a period of five years, do I finally get that credited? I mean, is that something that's done, or is it just always out there?
Based on the way the code is written, I don't believe that there is kind of a sunset date or a clause, if you were to move out and you either get that credit applied to your final bill, or you would get your, your deposit back.
Are there, are there other localities that, that do have that, you know, where it's applied? I know that our code may not, but I mean, does, is there, do we have the ability to apply that in the future?
To have a date where you no longer would get your deposit back?
Uh, no, where, you know, if I have an account that has not had any issues over a five-year period, my deposit is then applied to maybe my next bill.
Or automatically returned.
You know, versus, you know, it's a deposit, but it's really a contribution, because I'm going to live here the rest of my life, and I'm just never getting that money back. I'm just.
I would have to check with our auditors, but I think that that account is held as a, like a liability in the utility, assuming that at some point in time, if you were to leave, your deposit would be returned back to you. So, but we can look into that.
Is there such a thing as, if the issue is with transient people and not homeowners, is there such a thing as there's a, there's a one deposit for renters and one deposit for homeowners?
There are some localities that do that. We would have to then work with our attorney to make sure that our code, and then operationally, probably some of our forms would have to change in order to do that. But I don't know that, want to say that it's a hundred percent all renters, and that there aren't some homeowners that this applies to, and from a, just a ease of administration perspective, it's easier just to kind of have one, so that there's no discrepancies and time for error, opportunity for error.
I'm all for going it up, and I, you know, I agree with Dan on the landlord part. And the way to, I mean, for tenants, the way to, you know, if you were coming here and renting a place, it means you may be moving again. Hey, you get it back. You know, so if somebody raises, it's three hundred and fifty dollars, it's a deposit. You'll get it back when you leave. So I, I think it's an easy sell. Now, the problem with, I remember years ago, a person lived here in town and bought another house here in town, and didn't want to pay a deposit, says, well, just, he'd been here so long, he didn't pay a deposit probably. So there, there's always those kind of problems. But, yeah, I think, I think we're being neglectful of our duties by not raising it.
Now, you and I discussed this because the state legislature changed so much during COVID. I remember that years ago, I thought I'd paid my water bill, and I didn't, and it was due on a Friday. That Monday, they put something on my door, shut my water off. And let me tell you, I was down here ten minutes later paying the bill. COVID does, they, they did away with that. What is the rule? How long can we wait now? Is that something that has been rescinded by the state legislature?
No. And we actually had to adopt that, I think this council had to adopt that language to update our code last year. So we, we have to follow the state rule, and that's the rule. So it is, it does become a bit tricky. We have an internal calendar that we manage, and Public Works and Finance and myself, when we look at the shut-off list, and we have to look at the weather. And then we have to look at the days. We, because of our office hours closures, we do not cut off on a Tuesday or Thursday when we're closed, because we want to give people an opportunity to come in and pay. And so we are mindful of that and sympathetic to that. So we do look at that intentionally and manage that intentionally as a part of our processes.
Okay. Are there any questions from Mr. Oliver? Go ahead, Mr. Boy.
I, I want to go back to what you said. So there's no way to separate this for the water-only or sewer-only people? Or did I misunderstand?
I think the way that our code is currently written is so utilities deposit. It's not, I think it's inclusive water and sewer together. I don't know that it calls out specifically one or the other.
I, I would have a problem charging that much for a person that's only using fifty percent of the, the infrastructure of that. That's not a great big deal of money, but it is, in my mind, logically, kind of unfair for those. And we do have a lot of them. It's not the majority, but most of those would be the out-of-town folks too, so it's the even higher amount. Yeah, everything Maury is like water-only, a lot of things up and down that way are sewer-only. There's a few water-only up that way. I'm water-only. This street's water-only on this side. So there is a lot. So I would be, in that way, I'd, I'd be opposed to it. I, I do think we need to do it though. So, you know, I just have an issue with that language.
Is there any other discussion from this council? I would like to entertain, can we make a motion now, or is that something we have to do later?
If you wanted to give us direction, so that, since attorney's not here, and I don't know that you all, you can take action at a, at a work session. But I know, based on practice, sometimes that's either done or not done. But if you all want to entertain a motion to make an option, and then ask us to work to draft it and then bring it back.
To, to give you direction, a motion to direct staff to pursue this avenue for option A, B, whatever y'all decide. I prefer B.
Yeah, our staff recommendation would be B or C. So.
So I'm just.
The max again is C, which is the five months. So.
And with, with my issue just, just then, like, what is preventing changing the code to accommodate that?
I don't believe there is, but I would have to check, double-check with the attorney on that. Again, we were, we were just asked to look at the deposit solely, not any other substantive changes, because this would be future-focused. So administratively, we would then have to go, because I think our system is set up just to apply it as it was set up. So we would have to work with Southern to even see operationally how that could be applied based on our utility setup, because it's not set up that way.
I don't need a motion right now. We can just have a consensus and, and have India pursue this. Go ahead, Mr. Stork.
One question. So if, if, if all the current customers are grandfathered, then we're not going to ask them to?
Correct.
Up it. Then the sewer people really don't matter? Then the sewer people really don't matter, right? I mean, you're not gonna get.
I've had two new homeowners on this street this year alone, so. And anybody that moves in is just gonna incur this.
Yeah. Okay, I see. How many, how many people do we still have that are, that have their own septic field?
Eighty-five, I think.
Eighty-five?
Yeah, me.
That's out of like 900 and something total.
What's that?
That's out of like 900 and something total, yeah.
Yeah.
So like, less than 10%.
Okay. Well, so, I don't have a problem with saying, direction-wise, B would be my choice, but.
Okay, Mr. Voight? Again, we're not, this is a consensus. We're not taking a motion. Ms. Davis, how do you feel about this? Okay, and Mr. Hagaman?
B as well. But like with Jeff, I mean, our sewer rate is what, almost three times the amount of the water rate?
Yeah.
And maybe for those renters, that's just water, their deposit could be a little bit less two months based on the water usage, or if it's sewage, then it needs to be a lot higher, because that is, that costs us more to get rid of it and dispose of it or whatever than the water does. So maybe if we can have some type of wordage, like the lawyer can look into it, or however you want to write it, to where if it's just a water customer, the deposit will be based accordingly, and if it's just a sewer customer, the deposit be based according to that as well. I think that would be fair.
That actually brings up another point, if I can, Adam, there.
Go ahead.
This would be updated by ordinance change?
I'd have to work with the attorney, but I believe so.
And so if that's the case, when you write this up, you'd probably want to index it in some way, because we're probably, not that I want to, but like, you know, we're probably gonna raise the rates again next year, or maybe the year after that. So if, you know, rather than writing an amount, you might want to put in a.
Percentage?
Percentage of the bills, so that it automatically changes when we do. So we don't have to do another ordinance public hearing every single time. But, yeah, I agree with you, Randy, you know, with that separation thing.
So I believe at this point, you have your consensus and your guidance for that. Now, the other item that has to do with the utilities deposit, this came up last month with our public comment. If somebody lives in town, they're selling their home, and they're moving to a different property in the town, I personally do not feel like they should have to pay two full utility bills for two homes, because if you put them together, they had one, it's, it's only one timeframe. And so that's why he was very upset last month, because he had to pay the full two months from the house he moved from. And there was only three days on the new house he moved to, and then he got charged the whole two months. So he ended up paying four months for the two-month bill. And I sympathize with him. I don't think that that is right. I think if somebody is moving within the town from one property to another, now, they can go ahead and pay this deposit fee that they may not have paid, but I don't feel that somebody should be paid for two-home bills when totally they lived in town once.
I think that got worked out with the seller of the house, didn't it? So it ended up, he didn't have to pay that, correct, India? Or is that right?
Staff didn't.
I don't, I don't recall the specifics, but I do know that they were provided, both in both instances, I believe it was a minimum bill that was assessed, and it was assessed in accordance, in accordance with our current town code and our current rates. So that's, you know, that's ultimately a council discussion.
Go ahead.
Yeah, okay. First, I, I do want to acknowledge that, like, you know, staff, you know, handled that by the book, so I don't have any issues with that, you know? And then anything else, you know, if a person has issue with how that is, you know, bring it to council, I think, was appropriate, if we need to make a change. The way I feel about it, I'm trying to take into consideration, like, when you move. So when you move, you know, you, maybe idealistically, you'd move in on the first, but, you know, the weekend, you use the weekend and move. So a lot of people will end up moving a couple of days before the first, because that's when they have the weekend. And this person that came in last time is not the only person this has happened to. There've been, like, I think, two other people that talked to me. Now, it wasn't from in-town to in-town, it was from out-of-town to in-town, but it was the same kind of problem. And then some of that's related to whether or not we prorate, but that's a different discussion than this.
Well, that's part of this discussion, because that could be incorporated into.
Yeah, the latterly part of it. I personally, you know, if it were up to me and I could just magically manipulate the code and just, you know, make everything happen, right, and I don't know how easy these things are, right? But if we had a situation of maybe, say, three days or less, then I would like the ability for, you know, the treasurer, the town manager, or whatever, to like, you know, have, you know, not only discretion, because I think they already have the discretion, but, you know, like a policy from our point of, hey, we feel this way about that, you know, charge them differently for, you know, three days' less usage under blank, you know? I'd like to be able to do that, because I don't want to disincentivize people saying, yeah, we really want you to come to Bowling Green, but, yeah, wait till next week, you know? That kind of thing. And it's just to have that kind of stuff. I think it's a nice, friendly, neighborly kind of thing to be able to do. That's my spiel.
Mr. Hagaman?
I agree with Jeff on that.
Okay. Mr. Stork, what are your thoughts? You, okay. No, no, that's fine. Sometimes a blank mine's a good thing. How about you, Mr. Webb?
No, I mean, I think staff followed what our rules are, and so then, you know, I've never even thought about something like that, never crossed my mind. But, you know, I can see where if I buy a house in town and I come in for one month and I use, use it for one month and I don't hit the minimum, or, you know, I must, I feel like there should be, you know, our code should be set up to allow a proration. I mean, I think that is fair. You know, when you get into the weeds of how do you do that, I have no idea, and it's probably a lot more complicated than I understand it to be. So those are my thoughts. I mean, to me, it makes sense, but maybe from a practical standpoint, it doesn't make sense. And so then, you know, if you're only talking two or three days, maybe there's some leeway there. I mean, I kind of, you know, I can see it. I don't have a hard position one way or the other, because I think it's a lot more complicated than, than, you know, than I initially thought.
Than what we know. And I think we have rules and we should follow them. That's my opinion. So we can look at possibly, if you investigate this and you could present us, maybe with a prorate of a half a month, or one month, or weekly? I don't know.
I think we can have the discussion based on our current workload, on our audits and stuff, maybe in January at the retreat. I think that'd be an appropriate time, because I think there will be impacts, and there's some significant analysis that would need to be done to look at.
That's fine. So does this give staff a general direction to follow? Do you need more from this council at this time?
I think some clarity would be good, because I'm not quite sure what we're being tasked with, with looking into, other than trying to ensure that a minimum bill is not assessed for minimum usage. That's not clear to me at this point, what the ask is.
Well, I think that council pretty much was all in agreement that option B looked good to them, that if you went over with the attorney, what that looked like.
Oh, I'm gonna, I'm clear on that part.
Okay.
Yeah, option B.
And then the other is, if we were to prorate, what does that look like? Is that something that, if we were to prorate, do we prorate per month, per, per, per week?
That would be a pretty massive change. I don't think that's what we're really.
Yeah, so, I mean.
I think with, with the crunch we're in now with staff and.
We're shorthanded.
Yeah, let's bring up the prorating some other time.
Okay.
Because in life, it's like, if you, if you receive a social security check, you're paid on a third of the month, it's for the previous month. And that, if that previous month had 31 days and you lived 30 of them, you don't get the check. You gotta live the whole month to get the check. So there's plenty of instances in life where, can you imagine, try and prorate the number of deaths each year and get an exact check out? So we're not that, but I still think it's too much to fool with at this time.
Okay.
I say move on that and then maybe bring up those.
At our retreat, that's fine.
After the 2025 audits done.
I'm in agreement with that.
Okay. That's fine. So does that help you?
Yes, and just to clarify a bit more, because you expounded on a, on a part. You said you would like us, the manager and the treasurer, to have discretion on prorating abilities that based on a gallon usage, or like, because we can, we can look, we have various associations that we can ask other localities what they do, but I just need to know the parameters that we need to be.
Okay, well, I don't want to spend too much time on it, we only got a few minutes. If you had somebody that, yes, you know, the first was on Monday, so they moved in two days, three days before the end of the month, you know, that's not vastly utilizing our town's resources. You know, it's, it's more welcoming to not burden them excessively. And so having some sort of discretion where you can say, hey, you only used, you didn't even use anything, you just had it turned on because you moved in, you know, you used less than 100 gallons, you know, I don't want to charge you, you know, $350 for that. Well, we know what they meant, 120. You know, to just be able to say, hey, here's, you know, whatever, you know, 20 bucks, welcome to the neighborhood, you're gonna get another bill next month for a lot more than that. Just, I don't know what discretion would necessarily mean in that case, but just, just the latitude and then direction from us, like, you know, what we, as council, would want you to do in that situation with that discretion, you know? Because, you know, a later board would be like, we want every, every penny, and then maybe we would be like, give them that latitude. So, yeah, I'm just asking about policy, but having that.
Is your water bill, you, beans, you don't, you have your own septic system, is your water bill less than mine?
No. The water's the same, it's just.
No, no, I mean, your monthly utility bill, water, sewer, yours is like half of mine? Okay, gotcha.
Oh, yeah, yeah, they're split, yes.
Yeah, the water, but the water rate's the same, and the trash is the same, we just don't have the sewer fee.
Yeah, and I remember, you know, there's gonna be a day, you're all gonna be on our system, right? I mean, septic, septic fail, fields fail over time, and, you know, there was a push years ago to get as many people hooked up from a, you know, it's not cool to have 85 septic systems so close together, you know, health-wise. So I think it's all gonna come online one day, anyway.
Most likely.
Okay, I think we have enough.
So you have your direction. Okay, so.
So just for Mr. Gore's awareness, since he just got here, council has asked that we take a look at increase in the deposit for option B, which is kind of the middle approach for the two cycles, which is four months, and they want that brought back at the next meeting. And if that requires an ordinance change, then that's what we'll work towards. Thanks.
Are we at a point? Go ahead, if you, someone would, and make a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn the work session.
I have a motion from Councilman Stork. Is there a second? Second from Councilman Voight? Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. We are close our work session, and we will be back in here in five minutes or so.